Make motion to come out of recess.
Second.
And the motion is second, come out of recess, all in favor, saying by the same time.
Got it.
Those made. We are at recess, and so we will be moving forward tonight with the other half of our other part, I should say, of our review of the budget. Let me say that this is my eleventh. I got one less than you. But I'm always amazed how we get some good things out of this. A lot of people realize what this, how the city spends their money. So with that, I'll turn it over to the city manager, Parkin, and present, and start again with government grants.
Director. Yeah, that would be the first one. Good evening, everybody. This may be your lucky day. As you can probably already tell, now there's not much left after yesterday. And so unless or until I need to comment on this, I'm gonna I'm gonna delegate the presentation to finance director. Because she probably knows more about this than I do anyway. So I'll grab the mic and phone when I feel like that. So government grants is not a big.
So we put in amounts for several grants that are off the relatives. It's probably unlikely we would spend all of this in one year. And it's, it's all there to cover any of that. And I think a lot of these are ones that we had in previous years. Couple with CDVDs are informing.
And Mike, I, I do have a one and a half million dollar grant going in for a fire truck. It's under Kelly. I know it's plugging in here to cover stuff, but it's not listed directly. Another one I, when working, in fact, I use Menaro cheap set to put in a one and a half million dollars to the library. And I know there's some other money, but I don't think the least part of this is anything, but I think all that needs to be put in.
Is either library usually we put those on the miscellaneous grants?
Okay, that's why I didn't know.
And then the fire, the ladder truck is in public safety. So I would assume that you don't take the one they would take the other, so there's.
Public safety, there's what, nine hundred thousand?
One point two.
Oh, it was about one point two.
Between FEMA and other brands.
Should be done.
I don't know, with the ladder truck would be one point.
Six. Five.
Well, plus you jumped the grant actually five.
Anyway, just so we can come out, make a sure name. I want to make sure that, you know, if by any chance of imagination that we actually get these congressional awards, like out there being the Bush over.
Well, while I believe that this amount is sufficient, I think what I've got to do in the interest of transparency, if we're going to apply for the second grant, I think we should create a line for that. And if you want to call it a fire truck, maybe you want to call it congressional grant spending slash fire truck and throw it for a million and a half in it.
That's why I would, yeah, that would be, that would affect the budget because it's here or comes out.
I just want to be totally clear to the past there.
Right.
So. Right, so we got up.
Little, little nose.
Oh, this new thing. You know, you still got the grant at your bottom, so that's, that is a little bit of. So, but we jumped down there.
Yeah.
That's okay.
I'm working the back roads and not telling you everything.
And just plain, just sort of. Okay, so the government grants, is there anything back, you see anything that we got overlooked?
I don't think we anyone over this. No, no, it's. So, yeah, I think that's.
I don't see anything we overlooked, and just making sure that there isn't something that's come up recently that made the list.
The only thing, but I think there was the one that Daniel committed for, for the waste water plant, but I don't know if that's a new deal or not.
Yeah, for the public works grants.
Okay.
Okay. We'll get, we'll get to that.
Okay.
Okay, so then we're good on the grants. Public safety, fire grants.
At your top.
The only other thing there is fuel reduction grant, but I believe was already.
Yes. Yes.
Well, that's right. Mayor, did I mention that when, when, she called off?
No. No, it's gonna be late, all that.
Heard of it, have, that's the positive thing. So.
Okay.
Just so you know, the person who sits next to it. Okay, so unless there's anything else, we can move on to the invitation.
Well, that's what I'd be aware FAA grants would go if there were any possibilities.
Can I just ask a question on that? So FAA funding is currently suspended due to the lack of through the fence agreement. What, what is that?
You want to go ahead? Yeah, I'd say good point, but, but yeah, we, we've been fighting this since.
Fourteen.
Twenty thirteen, fourteen. The FAA requires that if an airplane comes, runs off of the airport proper, as we call it, through the fence, over your parking somewhere else, they have to sign an agreement in order to do that. Our people out there have views of news also, finally, the FAA said, we're done with you. If you continue to do that, we will not fund, we will not give you any more money to improve your airport. So in anticipation this year, we actually brought the FAA, we came down to the meetings, set up a work session, explained that all to the stakeholders out there and said, and when we get to the airport, we have to make a, we have to make a decision. Because to me, it is an asset of the city that we are ignoring, and it's slowly deteriorating, and, and we can't do anything about it. So we can close off that fence and say, we're done, then we can start getting those funds to improve the, the taxiway and the lighting and all the other stuff it needs. But then people can't come from off the outside to get there, which is something we haven't wanted to do, but it's, it's their calling, but that's the only way we're gonna get it. Or there's actually a new legislative law that allows, that possibly allow us to sell privately out to whoever wants to own it. So we don't have any vote anymore. It would be privately owned and maintained by a private ownership. We need an authority inside that. We would all money back the FAA, that we put a bunch of money for runway one times, but within the sales, then you have to come with that. So that will come up later, but the through the fence is a, is a, is an FAA rule, we can't do anything about it. We're trying to get them out there to sign the agreement to come through and go along. So I don't want to get into the, into the personalities of what, but that's the situation. Does that make sense, Steve?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's hard to understand why anybody would be objective.
For the thing they, instead of shipping out their rocks, you're not.
I figured it was. Retirement funds. There's three, two pots in there, entitled one in.
Right.
Which is a hundred fifty thousand dollars a year that we get to do things at the airport plus pay for any engineering fees that we have debated to design, this design improvements at the airport. We have, you see retirement thing, this is sworn in fourteen, that's when we got that. So every year, and you didn't, you didn't see it, but a couple weeks ago, we got our, as it said, and it says the same thing every year, your retirement fund is for fiscal year, whatever is about to expire. Since you can't take it, we're gonna give it to airport X, Y, or Z, somewhere else in Arizona, sign it and buy. So.
We're giving this away every year.
Yeah, so I think now, when we get entitlement money, it's good for three years before it expires. The one that we just got that expired in this year twenty twenty-one. So the best I can tell, we've now given about a hundred fifty thousand dollars times set up. And so when, when somebody who has an interest in your port, but doesn't happen to be a through fence operator, or which there's several, because there's people that ain't around, there's small, small business down there. And, you know, then of course they come and beat up on us because we're not doing anything down there. And we're not doing anything down there because we don't have funding to do this thing now. Now, we have a person that lives down there and does, you know, regularly makes grass cutting and that sort of thing, that's all we do.
Also, it's hard to understand.
Well, you have a chance to talk to him, maybe they'll tell you, they won't tell us.
Yeah, so we went so far this year, and actually we set up a whole meeting with the FAA come down, and we have a workshop there, signing all the bodies out there that have input since. Because they weren't believing us, but the FAA was being more reluctant, but it kind of laid it out.
In fact, that meeting, we thought that meeting went low enough that we noticed for the current year's fiscal budget, we actually put a hundred fifty back in because we thought we were.
Yeah, we're all.
At the end of that meeting, thought was.
Two weeks later.
Two weeks later, nobody signed.
How many people were?
Through the fence operators, there's five or six, maybe four or five at this point.
And I would suspect half of them have their clients at these.
Or, well, there's one that owns three properties, two of them are air green base. She's not a flyer, but she owns two properties down there. The big one down there is at the end, and she owns two hangars. And I think she can house fifteen or sixteen aircraft in those hangars, which of course she rents to people. And so she's different than the rest because she's considered a commercial through the fence operator, because she actually operates operates a business that requires use in the airfield. So if, if we were to discuss closing off access to the field, then that would impact, you know, that would plus fifteen or sixteen of the people who were at energy bay.
That's not an easy decision, but I just, after all these years, we do have a very good operator out there that's actually flying and doing stuff on our property, and that we can't help him improve his business because we can't get these funds. Hey, we'll talk about that then. Onward, can't wait. But that's, anybody else anything else on? I'm gonna try to help the manager where I can.
And say I'd like to just walk in too, so we can help you out too.
Okay, oh, there he is, there it is. Yeah, this one gets real complicated.
So next is Camp Macau, and they've budgeted the other half of the Mellon grant, that's expected to come in, and then the rest of the state grant, I don't know if I want to speak to him. What's he doing?
Yeah, Mike, you want to?
Budgeted for four employees, right now they have two.
I think we're gonna ramp up, right?
Yes, they are.
Next year.
Yeah, next fiscal year.
Yeah.
So just kind of general overview, start with where most of the money all started to spend, that's in construction. So earlier this year, we brought on the architect design team, Foster Martin McDonald, or Lundy Design Team, which in addition, the architect includes last day, Moncata, civil engineer, structural, and yeah, a whole lot of it all. So they're working on a designing package now. Yesterday, we got the thirty percent, the end package. We're planning to submit for especially new permit, which is county on Thursday. Once we get the special new permit approved, we've got green light and move forward with the plan for our building permits. So by June, we're planning to apply for our grading permit to start site work. We'll put that package out of bid in July. That will be for site grading, clearing, all of the infrastructure and utilities, so that'll be in the first pack. So that, we're planning to put that out for a, just an conventional bid project in July, and hopefully have that under construction by late in August. And that work will go through, through the end of the year until December. The other thing we've got in the works right now is a request for qualifications for a construction manager at risk. That person will be the general contractor that leads the construction work, the rehabilitation of the restored building buildings. So it's qualifications based pyramid, because we, we people that are, that have experience dealing with distort properties and with the building structures. So that proposal, that solicitation closes at the main tent. And then we'll go through a process, we do their qualifications and select contractor. That contractor then will work with the design team on completion of the design for the, the building renovations. And then they will provide us, at the end of the design process, they'll provide us with a guaranteed action device contract. And then we'll be able to start construction on the buildings, rehabbing the buildings. And that's planned to begin in January, about twenty-five. So, so that contract, so that's where the bulk of the money is going to be spent on the site work, and then on starting the building recap in, in January twenty-five. That'll go through probably November twenty-five, so we will go into next fiscal year, but put all that funding in this fiscal year, because we don't get kind of what the, the contract possibly, and also because when you work contract, we'll have the full amount. Then it'll probably be on site portion, you know, the work that's going into next fiscal year, it's very. So that's where the, most of the money spent this year. We're, we're moving forward with the design team, their contract is just under four hundred thousand, and we awarded that a few months ago.
Yeah.
Right, we canceled it. We'll be bringing, if you recall, there, there was a few phases to the design process. We awarded first two phases because we needed to make some modifications to the grant budget with the grant entities. So we got through that process now, and we're entering the budget, the revised budget that they approved. We didn't ask for more money or get more money, we took the money that was awarded and just kind of rearranged it. So that's being entered into their electronic system. Once that's done, we'll come back to city council with the renovation for work phase three for the design project. And that will be the completion of the, the buildings that were damaged in those arson fires several years ago.
I do have one question. Under the first page on sixty-five, it says medical insurance is twenty-nine thousand dollars, medical insurance? That's a lot for a two hundred thousand dollar salary. Thirty thousand in medical insurance?
That's for four employees, about six thousand a year. So I guess it's. Seventy-two. Seventy-two. I mean, that number will come down because it's based on the six percent increase. And we're in it for three percent increase, so it will come down, but this is based on four employees. About seven or eight thousand total.
Which right now, we got two. Right, no, I knew it was gonna go up because we have double employees. I just, it looked like thirteen thousand this year, it might be twenty-six.
Uh, there came because there, there's only two employees.
Right. Oh, we're doubling that one, I was thinking twenty-six, I'm thinking twenty-nine.
But then there was that increase.
That's a big benefit.
Yeah, this.
No, I mean. Anyone else have any questions to the?
I, I just add some context, especially for Pete. There's, okay, we have the two grants, the state grant with governor's office and the Mellon Foundation grant. Both of these grants were awarded for a period of four years. So our whole program is geared to a process going over four years to basically renovate the facility and put together a board of directors and hire an executive director, which will function on report of directors to operate it. Our, our ultimate goal, when we're done with that four years, is to hand the board of directors the keys to Camp Macau, that they're going to run it in virtually the same manner that we run the Miami Historic Museum at Tampa. They have keys to the building, they run the place, we own the building, so we do the maintenance, and that's kind of going to be really at Camp Macau as well. So we're gonna have, and the beauty of, especially developed part of this thing is that they are very interested in more of the program aspect, learning to do with this place, not, we're not just gonna build it, show, build it and put it under glass and, you know, charge a fee so you can see it. We're actually, it's gonna be on the up here now. And so I think for the whole region, that's a, that's a good plus. And Mellon also is very interested in making sure that our programming, to some extent, our employees represent people of color. And so we've been working under that scenario. Obviously, when we wrote the grants, we thought we knew what we needed to do, and of course, a year, a year and a little bit later, you know, we've already eliminated one job in favor of a different one, because we realized we actually didn't need that person, but we got money for it. So when Mike mentions that we went back and changed some of the terms of the grant agreement, both with Mellon and with governor's office, which they of course granted, that allows us to modify, and they're very good about it, by the way, you know, I was very surprised. So to see this thing move forward and succeed now. Mike and Brooks have a bigger problem than most of our departments do, because they have to, they have to continue in there, a budget approved. But they have to go to Mellon and get a budget approved, and they have to go to the state and get a budget approved. So they get to do this three times more than anybody else. And, but it's been working really well. Brooks has been a great advocate and a very a great addition to the team. We don't hire him as an employee, he's, he's working for us as a consultant. And his consulting contract will expire probably in August, which I think, by that time, hopefully, we'll be in a position to hire that executive. So, but we're moving along quite nicely, and we're anxious to see construction underway. Yeah, I've been telling Mike for a year, I just want to know stuff, that's all I want to see.
He just wants the plan distracted.
Yeah, I know. We have, sorry, we got a good deal on that.
Mike, do you have local contractors that specialize in the Adobe? I, we don't have local contractors that are familiar with Adobe or have the experience with distort properties. One of the things we put in place with qualifications that, that we're gonna be looking at in their proposals is how they plan to engage local contractors. And if you want to provide offerings to local contractors, so there will be putting a lot of subconsultant or subcontractor offerings, things like electrical plumbing, roofing, carpentry, that sort of thing. It's just the Adobe stuff, it's, it's just seem to be kind of hard.
Yeah.
And we did send Mike to school for the movie.
We did, oh, yeah, I did, I took a class. I said, yeah, so, yeah, and I'm learning a lot.
Any other questions on your office?
Mr. Mayor.
Yeah.
In the interest of, of Mr. Gramstein, when we're done with Mike, I think we're done with Mike. Can we go to the main table, so he can sit at the table.
Oh, yeah.
Well, just like Jason has. Well, he never did see him, I think he's back. Because we never did see him.
You know where he was.
And I seen him, he never seen.
Yes, he does, he's, he's got a lot of mine. So anyway, any, any other questions on the?
I would say, you know, he's hiding behind the darn thing, I can't see.
We're gonna do it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Yeah, thanks. Looking forward to page ninety-four, right?
I have one thing of importance that I think is, is about to significant change, and I want, I want to put it to you that. You'll notice in salaries generous to your budgeted amount in the next years, significantly higher than it was before. There's a reason for that. We hired Doug in two thousand and six, and he's been working for us now, well, eighteen years?
Yeah, almost.
And it came to my attention because I think we have to, you know, it's kind of an extension of our conversation last night, we have to be somewhat competitive with other similar positions in the, in the region. But we happen to have three of them, right? We have the director of the mine shore, we have the director of Miami Historic Museum, and by late summer, we're gonna have the, the director that we hired for Camp Macau, okay? These three positions are similar, and, and as Doug and Andy and I have already discussed, this is gonna be a triumvirate that he hope make tourism the whole greater than some of its parts. Doug has been very good about working for us all these years, and, and I think it's time to recognize that in conjunction, in comparison to this contemporaries, we are not paying them what shouldn't be paid under market. So what I am suggesting that we do is that we change this, I don't even know what his current salary is off the top of my head, but I did a market comparison, and the average is seventy-three thousand dollars a year, okay? Now, considering that all of our other department, department heads start at seventy-five, or not mean all of the guys, but I want to recognize all the years and all the value that this gentleman has added to our tourism effort, because those of you who remember with Clean Mine Tools, like before we hired Doug, it was, it was a loser, okay? Get black user, it's first class. He's, he's, he's transformed that place and really made a name for visiting and the tourism. People, many of our, our, our guests come first, it seemed like, and that wasn't that way before it got started. So I think it's only right that we compensate them in a manner which is at least on par with other people who are doing this job. And the Mellon grant has, I should probably say this out loud, Mellon grant has eighty thousand dollars for the executive director. Um I should probably say this out loud, Mellon Grant has eighty thousand dollars for the executive director budget. When we hired that, which now we hired eighty or some other number remains to be seen, but that's what's in the budget for now. And so I think it's only fair that since he's probably the, definitely the longest and, and possibly the most significant contributor. In that sector of our economy that I think it's just only right that we compensate him for that. And that's it. We started. Any other questions we have to answer? Otherwise, I'll have to take over with the rest of it.
I agree with that, I've been on the Mind Tour with Doug's mind body, he's fantastic. I just wanna sing his praises, and I think he should be at the same level as the other.
Well, I think we don't remember, is I remember the Mind Tour, we didn't have a gift shop. And really, literally, when you started that up, you know, there was some learning curves to it, obviously, and, and. Got it going, and now that, and it's half its way, I think, yeah, there's almost half of the situation, so, yeah, and then. But I happened to live across from it, so I hear the ding ding, and I look, and it's double train and double toll, and I'm like, oh, another ding, so anyway, yeah.
That, that, that ding's cash ups.
Oh, it's the ring that's spinning a little bell. Well, I can't think of that. Yeah, I have a pretty virtual idea of that. Uh any other questions on uh the managers? Bought their, or merchandise, and that all comes back, it's pretty impressive.
Under the, I've got the capital.
Yeah, I think it'd be a good idea to let them know.
Yeah, capital, uh located on mine repair at fifty-nine street back in the mine, that budget is forty thousand, or two false costs, so. It's a little bit of a mess, it's time. And what we do are repairs in the last, something there, we're trying to make those last numbers, so you rest a little bit more money, that we're not. Coming back, I'm reviewing them every ten years, you know, on that. That budget for laid, again, it's, there's, it's on this budget currently, uh that's so we can start validating. Uh mine are, we have both, all the parts, turning armatures, all the little bushings and stuff that are inside the little semotives, yeah. Those are just the parts, we ran into in that area the batteries this year. Uh they no longer make our batteries for a little bit more. But we, we got through it so far, you know, we're taking uh, we're converting them to full new ones.
And they're on wheels? You're on, you're on wheels, but then they're left with ten thousand dollars in wheel appliance.
Right, yeah, yeah, I think it'll, it'll last that long. But I'm gonna start uh turning our own, as I said. Uh now it'll be inexpensive, but I'm just uncomfortable, we're not gonna be able to get this stuff anymore. Um we're running out on that. Parking lots, filling the cracks and oiling it, seeing if they're ready or anything, that's on the parking lot.
Nothing on those rest, uh restrooms, one time we had. Prove us there.
Right, yeah, it was a couple years, I ended up just doing a little basics, and just, restrooms. Real quickly, get, you know, half, people who have done this, with restrooms, they're hard on them. So it's about every five, eight years, you just basically gotta go and put it all back in.
I have a question, um, and maybe I missed it. Why are we using a quarter of a million dollars of reserves?
Oh. That's, we put that always there uh for for, it just makes them feel real comfortable that we have money, because we need to be a major return certain part. It is, it is. We give things cheaper than people can, this is. Contracted, so much better.
Um unless you have anything else when you move on to the next one.
Thank you, Doug.
Thanks.
Okay.
So we budgeted revenue, we even write about where we expect to end this year. Being um set the expenses so that they match revenues, so we're not using any of the reasons. And then other than that, there's not really um this is same amount of employees. And basically the same expenses except for what we had budgeted last year for rent, rent and utilities.
I think some of you are aware that um we have been talking with um a homeowner on Main Streets without. Having that really big stuff and use as a, a Main Street visitor center. Um and as many of you who frequent Main Street can tell, not a lot has happened in that older. Um and our most recent conversation uh with the owners has indicated that it's not gonna happen in the next year either, so. Um and our original gentleman's agreement, as far as how much we were gonna rent it for, and then. Said that if he did everything he wanted, it was gonna happen, but we were agreeing on, so. So it's not totally off the table, but it is for the next walk. Be nice to have it, we appreciate something like this. I don't beat your ears, buy me a sale. Yeah.
I don't want to touch that.
So if there are any other questions, uh by the way, um the, the, the twenty thousand dollars that was budgeted. Uh for the uh golf cart. I still don't know how much we actually spent on it, but.
Yeah.
The uh, the Governor's Office of Highway Safety um had donated a couple of carts to the police department. Uh that have been sitting down uh at the garage for several years now, not being used. Um we were able to renovate one of those carts for part last thing, twenty thousand dollars. Um ran it recently away in service up there, so you should see it around town.
You know what, I did, I did have a little question, yeah, I had marketed, because uh why are we advertising, uh why are we budgeting less for advertising? When we had spent, gonna be spending about ninety thousand this year, we'll come back to seventy-five. I'm not against it, I just want to know the reasoning behind this.
Well, go ahead.
Well, that was.
Same as my words.
Yeah, okay. Love, yeah, go ahead.
But it was uh mostly to keep things within the, to match our revenues, so we didn't break into the fund balance.
Okay, that's good.
One of the things that you notice is um, one of the things that were done over the last years, they have. Um they're doing seasonal motifs for the fall and the spring and Halloween and all that stuff. Well, they've spent that money now, and they can use it over again this year. And quite frankly, um I think that the, from, from what I can see, and hopefully you can too. We've gotten a lot of bang for our advertising buck in the last year or so, and so I think we need to maintain that, because you know what happens when you decide, you know.
You already have to stay, you have to.
Yeah, and so we'll still invest, and we'll, and you know, about fifty thousand of this advertising money will be matched dollar for dollar. With the Arizona Office of Tourism, so we'll get two for one on our advertising dollar on that, maybe that every year. So, so we had essentially, we give about a hundred and twelve-five thousand for seventy-five thousand.
Can I ask you whether we have any reserves?
It's about three hundred thousand.
We've got some push, okay.
Oh, just a quick comment, you know, my question, I was there the day that the, the Oakmobile was delivered. The brand spanking you, I really did, and Heather was so excited.
Well.
So it was so pretty cool.
Guys did it.
But I did, I thought it was really beautiful. I thought we got some wonderful grant or donation and so.
Uh we did, we upholstered and painted in Douglas. Uh and then now we can't, stood in the last, new battery, this and that, so we are, we did bring it back.
Seat belts?
Because we were having to replace the seat belts because of it being a city-owned um vehicle and at the Queen Mine. Um Doug said you will, it'll be, it'll be, it won't make it through the, their um inspections. So that's something we didn't know about, so we won't, we're gonna be getting new seat belts on it, and I mean. There is a crack in windshield, so we'll be getting that replaced.
So what inspection, is it like?
Yeah, three board, M Shaw.
Okay.
I don't know exactly what you just said, when I get, when I inspect the kids on.
I can, I can give you a little, when they were doing all the soil reclamation, they were using my, my road, my house. And every day trucks were coming, going trucking, all of a sudden they get stops. So I go to them, I said, what's the matter? He says, oh, our inspector came, he pulled out the seatbelt, and it didn't retract past him. So we're, we are replacing twenty-five seatbelts in all of our trucks for the next three days, we're gonna be shut down there. He said it has like two and a half seconds to be completely, or else they turn it down, so that's how, yeah.
M Shaw is a pretty strict. Yeah, he said, we don't think.
Anyway, I don't know if it was M Shaw, but it was, it was like, oh, well, and.
Well, we know the company saw the district and not.
Wait, my, my goals, too many, so, alright.
Okay, anything else on Queen Mine? Oh, I'm sorry, and tourist. Okay, streets.
Well, streets, we, we budgeted well um. About the same in revenues that we're ending this year with, and then a four hundred and fifteen thousand use of the fund balance, which was what we. Expect to have at the end of this year, that we can use for street paving next year. Um the salaries are one less person, if this is four employees instead of five, we have um last fiscal year. And so then you have to face the street repair material sales tax. That one, it's the off of how much revenue we have, that's why there's an increase there, but there is a three hundred and six thousand for a street sweeper, so. So once the street sweeper is purchased, the following fiscal year should have more, more street repairs.
We talked one time about hiring a part-time driver for this street sweeper, is that something I was still looking at?
No, we, we, we did, but that, that ended up turning into a full-time. But we had to, because of our, our budget, because it's only having half percent now, it's hit us, and now in this budget. Uh we, when Javier Rodriguez got promoted, uh we did not refill that position because of the budget.
Yeah, hopefully when the P S V R S fill up.
We can look at. Yeah, so when we get this uh new street sweeper, we will be having one of the four uh driving that full-time.
Any other questions on the street funds?
The street lights are still expensive.
Yes, it always will.
And we should tell them, okay, and everyone.
A lot, a lot have been transferred to the L D, but I know like my neighborhood, it's, it's all old lines, it's still my neighborhood, so. Most of the L D's, you see like, yeah, see them on the pitch, so, they're, they're working their way.
Okay.
And then.
Should we go?
We go, it's the same, we budgeted the same every year, and you're uh creating a fund hardly anything.
This budget's a lot more active, and we've got a lot more seizures and accounts. Um obviously, that activity has been retained, and uh so.
Like, is it just throwing you off when budgeting for a hundred thousand that you expect to be part of the income that doesn't feel like, realize? I mean, should we be looking at this time, maybe, maybe some adjustment, because you keep saying a hundred thousand. Oh, so, it's been answered that, it was possible, it could be a big one.
Oh, okay, okay.
You wanna just round out that.
It's offset by the one right, so it's, take it from this pocket and put it in this pocket, it's a wash. You get it, you can spend it if you don't get it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, it's kind of like a grant, it's just a.
Okay, I was in, okay.
Like it's placehold, placeholder?
Yeah, 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 we used to use it a lot when we had the big auctions down for, you know, a lot.
Yeah, and to be honest, and just so you know, it's a fund that I tried not to get into anymore because they were charging this interest on. Basically, my money's sitting there.
Okay.
So I didn't like that, because I had to pay them the whole bunch cash, so I moved most of it over to a different fund anyway, so.
We don't, we don't get to use this like a regular fund, the, the Rico money is essentially under the care of County Attorney's Office. And when he wants to spend money out of Rico, then he has to make a formal request. It has to fit within whatever the standards are, the Rico expenditures, and the County Attorney has to do it. But the statement the chief just made, saying, so you put it under different account, is it different account?
No, I don't use Rico anymore for my seizures, I use what they call federal asset seizures, it's totally different and separate.
And budgeted for, or do you?
My federal assets are all in budget.
It's budgeted.
It's all in budget, I have a line item for both.
No, yeah, it's been, been actually, you hadn't used Rico in the second long time, I didn't even know that these had it. Until the chief came for us, well, to purchase something with Rico for us, so I was, I was glad to see that.
And, and we have to maintain the line item, because unfortunately, there are certain items that I have no choice in, and they end up being Rico anyway. Um but I try, just because, I told Steve and, and, and Terry, I, I try to get rid of those as fast as possible, because I don't like paying. Someone the whole of the money that is for us.
It should be making money, not paying. They are feeling.
Anything else? Should do that, thank you. Disney Arts Commission, should we ask Leslie to make this present?
Pretty much, I'm saying.
I think the only, there's a donation for Park Ben, that's new.
Is there a reason that the sales have gone down from twenty-three uh from fourteen thousand? And this year, we're estimating to only do seven thousand, so it's gone down by almost fifty percent, you know why?
I, I heard that they were having the cannibal issues with the machine, so it could be now.
Yeah, they got a lot of.
Yeah, I've seen those myself, so the customers will come over to me and ask me why they.
Yeah.
I was told. No, I get them shitty, actually, I try to help, but yes, I mean, it was, it started at nineteen thousand, fourteen thousand, boom, dropped to seven thousand, so maybe. What they have in there, and maybe try to market it, and I'm wondering if there's any, you haven't seen, see relish, still out there.
Or people in Colorado is down.
It's not like impulse.
So Leslie, that's your thing now.
Okay.
Get that cigarette.
Yeah, get it going. Unfortunately, I think they make one a lot, you think, let's say, reds. They did, yeah, I don't like that business. You don't make that much money.
Alright.
Any else on that?
Are they still planning, they're, they're bowling more of them, of them.
They're putting in port on that.
Not making it bigger.
They're not making it bigger, now that turns into a whole thing. They're not making it bigger, now that turns into a whole thing.
Oh, they're, yes, I had those stupid telephone booths taken away, those, you know. About the booths, for the telephone stands, stands that were puddling and that got, they're gonna build that, but not this one.
Whatever happened to those stands?
I don't care.
Well, I do think that somebody asked for it. More ones.
Yeah, they're, I don't know, they're, uh, okay, and all the, come on, you have to put them over there, Doc, you, I think, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, that's on the area street line.
Oh, really? Oh, put them up?
Yeah.
Oh, have we got phones?
It just looks cool like it.
Yeah, okay.
Okay, uh, next is housing initiative. Um, I think you all have a pretty good idea of how that program works. Um, and uh, I mean, the only thing, uh, comment that I would make on that is. Um, we're kind of at the limit of our resources, both human and financial. Um, you know, the small crew can only do so many houses a year. Um, we'd love to do a lot more, uh, we, we keep talking about finding ways to do that, um, eventually. Somebody will come up with an idea, we'll be able to do a hundred-two more a year. Uh, the demand, um, this most recent house that was finished, um, was shown. Five times last weekend by a moment, and I think at least one more, maybe two more walk-ins. So, the demand is out there. And uh, in, in fact, uh, we think that, um, the uh, um. Arizona Department of Housing, who we talked to a number of times, uh, Mayor, who I have on, on calls with them. And uh, and with what Melanie's working, um, there's student, Melissa's working, and, and Danielle's working. Uh, various state departments and federal agencies, we're hoping that, uh, we're getting enough attention for this thing that. Perhaps we can find a way to get more assistance, both in, in human and financial resources. Just, I believe that, no limit, uh, inventory out there, and there's all kinds of houses that we could buy and make. And then move them down, you got to, that's, that's good, and a lot of ways that you all already know about, so. Uh, the, the plan is just simply to continue going as best we can, really follow it, and then see what happens.
Yeah, it's currently a step outside of streamline things, making more efficient. Prices have done, you know, we know materials done, options out, and labor costs, trying to keep that in mind, so we sell the house.
We're battling everything that everybody else is battling in terms of, I think, keeping houses, you know, uh. And it's, it's almost like anything under two hundred thousand dollars, which is reasonable now.
Yeah.
And, but that still doesn't meet our goal, right? Okay, we, we want to keep them a lot lower than that, so.
Point of order, or point of, yeah, information is, if you ask me, I believe, have the governors here. Right now, I just emailed a couple of days ago, we've been having monthly meetings with them, and they're hearing more about it, and so I. Pushed a whole bunch of information over there, I think they're gonna start looking and see what, if there's some way to help us in that one, so. We can speak, going out there, we can, we'll stick to the wall, take a bunch of stuff, go out there, and I'm hoping that. They're kind of excited to see that we're actually doing something to lock cities homes.
Without any assistance.
Yeah, without, without taxes.
Yeah.
Are you thinking on that? Yeah, also I hope that question maybe very good. Uh, on the, basically, we're supposed to sell them for what they cost us, but looking at this by the end of the year. The sale will be two seventy, but our cost is two seventy-seven, so are we having to. Put this out of the city pocket, or where's that money coming from for the difference? Or this is just in Gustin, I mean, the number are gonna balance out, or, or there's a, something else you can do now?
Um, well, well, there is a house that, that went up for sale now, um, so that will go towards. The, I think the year estimate, I'm not sure if that includes the one that's currently for sale.
So this is, uh, this will balance out, so, but I'm looking at seven thousand dollars difference between what we discussed in the, okay.
If that sells at one sixty-five, then that's gonna, that's gonna be there for the next house to buy.
Yeah, so, the, uh, the, the method that we used was, we get a fair market value, not, it's not a. Full-blown appraisal unless we decided to need one, we don't usually, um, we get a fair market appraisal from a Realtor. Um, and then discount that amount by twenty percent, and it's, and market that price.
At, at the stage within what it cost us, I mean, we, we don't fork the difference.
Well, we, we also take into account how much we got, in terms of.
Okay, so, yeah, that's, I mean.
I'm not gonna sell it.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's what I wanted to do.
Yeah, okay.
Wouldn't, wouldn't, wouldn't be self-instituting.
Yeah, right, yeah, and maybe if we make a little more and keep it, I mean, it's.
Well, I mean.
For that was, because as cost goes up, you may need to create some kind of, you know, extra funding that could, yeah.
There was actually one, it was almost two years ago now, the one that we did in Warren, that uh, was, it was in USDA foreclosure. And essentially, they gave it to us, and, but needed a lot of it, we put a lot, but we did make some significant money.
Yeah, and that's, that's okay.
I mean, it's gonna, it's gonna have an influence, yeah.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah.
Misalignings, renovations, go ahead, that's good one.
I think there's, I did about the same every year, uh, the million is there just in case you get a large donation from some generous person. Um, any others are a little bit more predictable as far as, um, what, based off of what we've received from accounts.
Maybe that, one day that million will show up, you've seen it every year.
If we don't put it in there, it will.
Okay, um, Mr. Mayor, you wanna lead off on the airport?
Well, gotta start having this discussion earlier, so, no, it's. I don't think it's for tonight, so I, hopefully, we, as I believe as a council, need to. Seriously consider what we want to do with our airport, because it's fifty-tyre out there. Uh, the, the taxiway is bad, we don't have the lights we need, things are not being kept up, walking away from a hundred and fifty thousand dollars again this year. And, you know, we've been trying to get along, and I really thought we, we, we probably have a chance to, we go ahead and get it this year, it didn't, so. I just felt personally. That I'm not treating, treating assets, right, by just ignoring it, kicking the can down the road, year after year after year, not doing something. I think at some point, uh, I'm gonna bring it up to all of us and decide. We're gonna have to say, it's time to do this or not, and give them an ultimatum, if you want to continue to do this, we decide to miss through, if not. We'll close it down and start working our way without, so, it's, it's only reasonable to do, it's a tough position, but. But I represent more than pilots, I represent, we represent also, we have to take care of our assets, um, you know.
Would there be an option to privatize it?
There is, um, that would have to be looked into, I know there is a state law that allows that, but, but we also have taken federal funding, funding for the. Uh, previous runway and stuff, so it would, we would have to pay some of that back, so if we sold it as a private. Long as we can sell it enough to, to read a lot of blues, but, but yeah, then it would turn over and, and people could run it as they want, and. Because, still, it is the airport, but it's not owned by the city, so that's another option, um, well, I think you're right, we need to have a discussion, so. Right, so, I'm not here to, to, got to, got to budget this year, but, um. That's just the way I, I brought it to, um, City Manager's pension, and, and said, let's go ahead with this, but I think that's one thing that we. We kicked the can down the road a long time.
Then I agree with you, I think that's, that's, we need to stop somewhere, I mean, something that, um, I think we can't just ignore it, right? And, uh, we can deal with it, and maybe, because we can't, we don't have the finances for it, uh, look at all the options, including.
There is a good person out there in the anger now, students, and we could do more things with them, but we could put somebody behind us, but we're, we're. I'm passed on, he's giving pilot lessons, and, you know, but then I go out there and I hear that their props are getting chipped up by the rocks coming up, and.
Yeah, every time, believe me, I hear it too, and that's the reason I'm, 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 because it becomes every time, real, what they're supposed to do is every time they get a prop. Uh, straight, you know, it's supposed to, it's mail their engines, and, and the prop, and, and reset everything up. Um, so it's a, it's a big, it's, Eric is, is the flunders, uh, and his wife will do, run the company. Um, and they have people coming from all across the United States to come to this third school. Uh, because they have a plane, uh, probably live plane that is, uh, rare for to get a license for, uh, so they have people coming all across the United States, you know, coming in.
You're basically giving in to a few, the few defense, that, that are holding this hostage, so, thanks. I'd say we're fine with the way it is right now, we are, understand, putting five thousand dollars up in general fund to keep it moving, and see that on, on the last item. We usually do have to pay more than what the fuel will, will, will handle it, but it's not, it's not getting better.
It's something that we would put on agenda, and it's in, you know, come, yeah, it's not talking about, and I think. Yeah, so, pretty quickly out to the first, the next school, you know, I think we do that, have that discussion, um. You know, every action has an equal opposite reaction, which, well, it's free laws, and the life, the business, and life, it does in science. And, um, one of the reasons that so many airports are owned by these powers. Um, and by government agencies is because we have the access to the funding. To do the capital improvements, like we have, like the one that we did, and I wanna stay in twenty oh nine or something like that, so stop me. But, that was, I think, about a one-point-two billion dollar expenditure, I'd love to see what it is now.
Yeah.
Um, and, uh, when we do that, we s, we s, we sign a contract saying that. Um, we will own this airport for twelve years. And if we, if we decide not to own this airport, then like the mayor said, we'll pay a proportionate share of, um. Basically, uh, you know, that period of time over the twenty years that, that we're not gonna use anymore. Private operator, on the other hand, there, there's not so many private in airports, at least not. To the degree that this airport is, with the taxiway and shake hands and. Flight school, and then, then, then radio system, so, because they don't get federal companies, okay? You know, private op, I mean, if we could find a private operator that wanted to buy the airport, and have the money to do all those things that we, we found over a period of time. Uh, that would be wonderful, okay, by that, I think that would be wonderful. Um, but, um, but now you know the reason why most of them are government owners, because we have the access to the funding, you know, right? Yeah, improvements, you know, um. F A P, ninety percent of that, I don't like, uh, A dot air and light, it's paid five percent of that one, and we paid five percent of them. So, in that same ratio, I think that same ratio still holds today, and, uh, so it's a happy deal. Um, and it's a happy deal for the people who are using that operation.
Mm-hmm.
Um.
Send someone though.
And it keeps possible, so, uh, you know. Uh, and, and just one more thing, I know, um, you know, we make periodic contacts with persons who has the most influence over. Signing through fence agreements, and I know the mayor contacted her recently, about two weeks ago. Uh, he didn't know, and I had contacted her about two and a half weeks ago, she does not respond to any of one of us. Um, after the work session we had with the F A A, um, last year, uh, she had indicated to us that she was going to. Make a decision, get back to us after a couple of weeks, and then, um, actually, while, she was very tired, so. Um, I mean, I get the other part of it, okay, it's, there's emotional attachment, I, I get, I get that, but. It's hurting so many other things that we need to make a decision, and I think a good time to do that would be sometimes.
Well, I think, I'll shame you, you've had to throw away a million dollars, I don't know, that's so weird.
Yeah.
Okay, that's almost.
So anyway, that's it for me for the airport, unless there's any other questions? Okay. Go ahead, that's good.
Special revenues?
That's alright, I, I have a voice that cares. Any questions on that, uh, my grant requests and stuff, there, it's pretty much the same thing we go through every year. Maybe for you, Mel, on the very bottom, you'll see the federal a, asset forfeiture that we talked about earlier, um, right now, it's a projected zero. Um, I was just talking with Steve before the meeting, I just found out we're gonna have some income coming into that, but it's, it's money that comes in, we don't spend. Anything, I mean, it's not our money, the city's money, it's just the money that we take in, so.
Pass through?
Yeah, it, 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 well, uh, long story short, we did a, um, inter-agency, all the federal alphabet. Stuff, where we did some search warrants and stuff, that was all the way up to Phoenix. Uh, we ended up having a fifty thousand dollar cash seizure, out of that fifty grand, the federal government is going to award the Visby Police Department thirty thousand of it, so we'll get a tip for the third grand. And that'll go into that federal asset scene.
So, should we pencil that in?
I would pencil that in, I just found out about it after, like, last Friday, I think it was, so it wasn't part of the initial discussions. Um, all the other ones are pretty much just grants that we keep going with every year. Um, we budgeted a little high based off of my track record, I guess you could say, because I'm gonna try to get as much as I can like I always do. Um, I do have a federal grant that I just received a contract for today, which is two hundred and ten thousand dollars, which came through federal appropriations. So that one's included in there, that's one of the D E M A homeland security things, um, so. Two hundred and ten thousand, that budget amount's already got a little earmark on it, so.
But it looks like you're gonna do well, I mean, uh, the D E M A, you're gonna, you are expecting, you're proposing that one point six million?
That's actually a carryover from the D E M A grant that I was awarded this year, but it's a five-year grant. Um, so, so far, six hundred thousand of that has been spent to one point, whatever's left is gonna be a carryover for the five years.
So maybe then we should, we should not put, record it as such, six hundred has been spent, your proposal for twenty twenty-five, one point six, you said, some have been spent already.
Right, but that also includes money I'm gonna go after for this year to.
Oh, so you expect it to?
Oh, I expect to get more of this.
Oh, okay. I'm okay with that.
Sorry, I didn't understand.
You know me, I like that, so, yeah.
I didn't understand you, but that, that was, that was all new vehicles.
Yeah.
That was all, yeah, that was the vehicles that Anna had, okay, last night, the radio was coming from Japan.
Probably the police thing. Alright.
Alright.
Any other questions on that?
I have one. Did we ever get the, uh, the shields?
Yes, um, funny story there, I guess, uh, I'll just tell you. Uh, I ordered the personal protection shields, and they were ordered, and they got delivered to my office last week, and what was delivered to me was ten force entry shields. Which was not what I ordered, um, so I now have ten force entry shields, and they're sending me the ten shields I originally ordered, that will be here, so.
So, um, there, so it's, so they're doing okay on their mistake, or.
Yeah, they made it right.
We're benefiting from their mistake.
They, they made it at, they made it right.
Okay, and that came out of, that came out of the D E M A grant?
No, that was the one hundred club that.
Great.
And I see what this, I mean, I do success, that's, that's pretty good, pretty nice, pretty money.
Alright, I hear you, I'm gonna begin to do the same.
Oh, wasting.
No, we can't.
Waste water.
Waste water shows, um, a slight increase in user use, I mean, I think we talked about having a. Wastewater shows, um, a slight increase in user use, I mean, I think we talked about having a. We we did the O P increase in January, and to catch up with, um. The original rate study, we will have another one next January, but I guess that will depend on the new rate study. And then there's the one point two use of unbalance, which basically covers our one point two depreciation expense. Um, which is a like, well, I think it was a three and a six, which isn't like actual money going out, but we have to, we don't, but if we not. I mean, same number of employees, same about the same as far as. Expenses. I'm not sure, under contract service collections, there was eighty one thousand allocated for this year for the acoustic. I'm not sure with the ninety two, this one.
So the.
I have a little contract services. We went ninety thousand, but we went down to seven seventy, is that true?
Um, so for the thirty four week, yes. So in that, I have R H Ford, um, we use that this year for the, um. Um, the sound wave collection system, um, and. And we now have D I S mapping for our sewer system. Uh, this, uh, I'm looking at, I put seventy thousand in here. Um, I'm looking at, because we've had, um, conversation with A T Q about our metals. That have been failing our our wet tests at the plant, um, and we believe it's coming from our collection system. Because we retested and 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 replaced things of plants to see if there was things in the plant. Uh, and we have now shown that it's not, so it's in our collection system. Um, so what we're looking at is A, uh, R H Ford has a new saw, um. Uh, hardware, uh, system that will, you put in the in the van holes and you keep them in there. Um, and they will detect I N I, we're supposed to detect I N I. Uh, that's one of the things that A T Q is asking us, uh, to do an assessment, um, for. Uh, so that's one of the things, that's what the seventy thousand is, seventy thousand out of this is. Um, the rest is fourteen thousand for the rate study. Um, and then there's forty two hundred for, uh, that's coming out of all the. Main departments in public for all the departments in public works for, uh, our softwares, uh, or work order, uh, and management and.
Matt, I get lost. Well, I'm sorry, wh- where are you at? What are you talking about?
Uh, that is, uh, contract services.
Yes.
Slash collections, and it's ninety two thousand two hundred.
Uh, the collection as contact services slash collection?
Yes.
Okay, so.
There you go, Ken. So there's R H Ford for seventy thousand, there's the rate study is in that. Uh, as well as forty two hundred for software and, uh, asset management.
Is this, you're talking about the proposed budget of ninety two thousand two hundred? So you add you add it up, what's what's in that?
Yeah, those are.
Okay, what's gonna be in there?
Okay, yeah, okay. Yeah, those are what what adds up to being up to ninety two.
Oh, okay.
All right, ninety two, two, okay.
It it I I I have a question on this though, I mean, um, and just so for for everyone. Why did we, and this is maybe a question should have been asked to ask you. Uh, twenty twenty-three, our, uh, contract service was at eight thousand two hundred, jumped to eighty one thousand. And then it's gone again to ninety two thousand, is this because, uh, can you repeat what 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 has gone into this, please, yeah?
Yeah, so, uh, in twenty, our last budget that we're finishing up right now.
Yes.
We had budgeted for, I believe, seventy seven thousand for R H Ford. Twenty one with R H Ford, okay, to do the assessment for the sewer lines.
Oh, okay, okay.
That's what that calls for.
Okay, okay.
Uh, and out of this also comes the the enterprise trucks, uh, for two Colorado's that we have. There's twenty six hundred, um, that comes out of this, out of this collection, uh, complex services. For in for the the three main, um, departments of public work, sanitation, screens, and wastewater.
Okay. So things that we had, we did that we had not done before.
Correct.
Okay.
We, um, hopefully, then you have the contract renewal of Jacobson, so.
Yes.
Been a bit of a slum, slum.
If this, if this, uh, the line before that, is that the contract service, uh, we have, we we we're gonna end the year with nine hundred, but we're looking at. Uh, budget in seven seventy?
Yes, that is for Jacob.
That's for Jacob, so you think it's gonna be in twenty-five, it's gonna be less than, uh, what the.
Yeah, so the Eisenhower is, uh, year-end projected. We, right now, we are, the only thing left to negotiate on contract is to get. Yeah, all of the other terms of the contract have been, you know, have been approved by old signs. And what we would love to give is proposals.
So you think it's gonna be within the seven seventy?
Uh, that number is, uh, probably gonna change.
Okay, okay.
Just know, know, and we'll let you know when.
Okay, okay, it's one number, okay.
We.
We're trying to get it before this came out.
Yeah, we've been pushing them, and, uh, for some reason, this is the last thing they wanted to do.
So this number could change.
It will.
It would change.
I hear, yeah, yeah, because nine hundred is not gonna go down to seven seventy, this is, you know, okay.
That's, that's why I love it. So how many employees do we have in wastewater?
There is four employees, uh, I have one that just, well, there's there's a lot we didn't have to do. We put in these two weeks, so I'll be down to three, but we'll be, we're earning, um, closer for that position.
And they're all full-time, you have no overtime?
No, not, they're full-time.
Okay, and then what are the hookups fees, these statements?
Uh, two thousand.
Really?
Yeah. As I'm saying, I don't think it's ever changed, yeah, it hasn't changed. But it has changed.
It has?
Yeah, sorry, I'm not your lie.
I have my receipt for sure.
But that that that's, and maybe that was to include some something else, I don't know.
Yeah.
Something, definitely, thirty five hundred, but that's, as long as I know that it was two thousand.
I remember that.
It has a big enough house.
No.
You know, it's not very sound.
We, uh, since we're doing a refresh on the rate study, we come this year. I think that's a big topic to cover, with what we look at. Hookup fees, I mean, it seems like it ought to be a lot. Produce your spot.
We don't have impact fees, a lot of cities have impact fees, they made up a lot of that stuff. You have to build a new fire station, new library to handle, uh, we don't have that. Can't get it because the state won't allow us now?
Well, we had those numbers in Colorado, we knew, there was a real feeling that might be administered.
Yeah, but they're all over the place.
And and the state comes in and lies that stuff every single day, so, so every new connection, uh, is also inspected by our building.
I don't think I'll say that, yes, I just, oh, okay, go ahead.
No, I don't, I don't.
No, I I so those numbers when they change, we we've already figured out what our our collection is gonna be the income. So hopefully that will will cover, will not be so out of line that we have to need any more adjustment, we need more index. We didn't count, I'm high.
We have a rate adjustment.
Yeah, we did that, yeah.
We're gonna do another, let's keep up with it.
This is why I'm, okay, okay, I guess we'll ask that question once the numbers come up.
Sure. And we'll send those out.
Enterprise funds have to pay for themselves, that's the whole.
Yeah.
I think it's cheap, that's a video.
And there is a, uh, second page for wastewater. Yes, you're not doing it. I just wanna make sure everybody's in that. Alrighty. Um, anything else about the sanitation?
Sanitation, um, usually. Is a, it doesn't need to use a use of unbalance, but there's capital expense in there for about two hundred and fifteen thousand. Um, which is requiring use of unbalance. Other than that, um, most of the other same number of employees, some are expenses.
You want to do that thing, is that the trust? No, we can talk about that, we want, that's on the second page, yeah, the, uh, what we got. Um, I'm requesting, uh, two hundred and fifteen thousand, we are. You guys just passed, uh, yesterday, the purchase of the, uh, glass crusher, uh, equipment. Um, and I am requesting two hundred and fifteen thousand to build a building upon city property for our, uh, recycling station. Uh, we have a small little shack across the street, um, that our recycling department has been in for. Since two thousand, two thousand and five, thousand and six. Um, it's a just a lean-to on the on the backside of the transportation. Uh, and if we were able to get this, we move onto our own property across the street. Uh, we're able to have our own times, uh, for customers to come in, um, and this would allow our our bailers. Um, and even the part of the, uh, blast portion to be, uh, indoors and our. Uh, our, uh. So our employees to be able to, uh, work indoors, not all all the time, but we all remain indoors, uh, as well. Um, one of the things with the glass crusher, uh, is it's. If there's a lot of moisture, it'll gum up, uh, in there, it won't work as properly. That's one thing that you really wanna look at, to be, uh, it could, it will work, so it just doesn't get through. Those, I mean, it will work, we'll just have to gauge, uh, when we are doing our glass crushing.
And so where is this property again?
This is, uh, the same property that Big Broad is on, uh, and we have at the corner here, at this intersection here, this three-way intersection. It's on the, uh, it's on the south end of that intersection, southwest corner of that intersection is our property. The only part that we don't own is where the ferry house is.
Where all the dumpster juice is.
Yeah, yeah, there you go, there you go.
We got our.
Yeah, so we have plenty of room over there to expand our recycling, uh, and to go into. I'm still, uh, last year we went and and put in for the EPA grant and for a couple of other things. We weren't able to get that, but I'm still gonna be, uh, going out to get an air train burner. So that's why I think that if we can be over on our own property, uh, we can expand, uh, our recycling even further. Right now, we're pretty much max at what we can do.
So are you looking at building a building or coming in with, uh, portable buildings? What do you think?
Uh, this is, uh, we got, this is pricing we've received, this is for a metal building, uh, and a pad.
Possibly.
And electrical to all come in and put on 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 property.
Yeah, we turn the electricity.
Yeah, I'm just. Especially for the the glass crusher and the bayonet, yes.
Those can't turn the wheel that fast, so.
So, so, Matt, are you adding more employees to what, uh, you bought, uh, uh, these? You know, I want a sanitation fund, so this will be what we have right now?
Yeah, so right now, I have, because recycling is is under sanitation. We have sanitation supervisor.
Yes.
And then you have, I gotta look at, I lose count.
About four times in addition.
Uh, we have one full-time sanitation supervisor, four full-time sanitation drivers, and four recycling.
And you have the speed, are you having now?
Yes, we speak, oh, yes, we, for recycling, we have two full-time and two part-time.
Okay.
Uh, that's the total four. For recycling, yes.
And with the crusher, with the with what you plan on doing, you will not increase the number, these people will be able to handle?
Yes. Okay. Essentially, we're gonna be changing what we do, not adding to what we do. Alright, well, I I think it's it's fair to say that, and we've been, we've been kind of. Battling this change, but ob- obviously, the market dropped, um, a lot of conventional recycling methods, and it's remained very low. Um, so what these guys have been doing, this, they've been trying to figure this out, we're talking with other communities and doing other research, okay. What are we? What are we, what can we do differently with the same material, so that we can actually get some practical use out of it? Well, glass crusher was the answer to one of those problems. You know, we transport glass, I think, up to, um, Venus. How many minutes, and by the time we get paid for the glass and make the trip, we don't, we don't make anything on it, okay? So if if you're not gonna make anything on it, you should be able to make something you can use.
Mm-hmm.
And so now, we believe that we will be able to create as much sand as we can use for municipal purposes. If we actually do more than that, maybe we can make the buildings on the public, so we don't know that yet.
Yeah.
Uh, because we know how much glass we get, um, but we don't know what it looks like, once it's gonna reduce the sand. Um, and then there's a lot of people who don't recycle glass at all, who I think would be motivated to.
We will, once if we.
See what we're doing, yeah. Uh, I'm I'm another thing, if I can, um. We s- we've touched, we still, um, process the glass right now. Uh, it still takes a lot of time, because we don't wanna take up, uh, two hundred and fifty gallon, uh, container with. Whole bottles and take it up to fix, because we will have, it'll take, we'll be going constantly. So what we do is we have, we we crush the glass.
By hand.
By hand, with, uh, we have a piece of, uh, square metal that we built, that we're able to, we dump it in with the forklift. And into there, and then we crush that down, and then dump more in, crush that down. So this will actually, will probably save us time, because once we put it into the hopper and it goes through the system. We'll a- we'll be able to do other other things while this is going on, uh, and going through with the system of. Breaking, because you have a jaw crusher first, that breaks it down into chunks, and then it goes out of the conveyor belt. And then it goes on to, into a sifter that sush it onto it, another conveyor belt that goes into the actual, um, uh. The, uh, mill handlers that crush it through a, uh, three-eighths, um. Uh, what's, uh, uh, frame, yes, thank you. Uh, then that goes on to a conveyor belt into an end container, then we'll have sand.
You know, I'd like to see, once you got this, do a video, and that one inside the public. Be a B I O on the web, on the city webpage, what are we doing with this? I think this would be.
Um, we will be, um, expanding our glass collection as well, that's one thing I I talked about, uh, yesterday. Uh, and that's something we put into the narrative for the, um, for the grant. We're gonna be expanding our glass, we're gonna be going to every restaurant, every bar in town, uh, that has left. And dropping off, uh, places like that where we can.
We're going with the glass.
We're going with the glass, um, and.
I love it, I love it.
It's gonna be, we're gonna be getting a lot of glass, but you're getting in a container that is this size, and it's gonna come, and then we're just. It'll probably fit in my hand, one loss, one of the terms is sand, so.
So question on on the pressure, do the labels have to be removed before it goes, so if we all.
Yeah, yeah, even the metal caps, uh, it has a, uh, a conveyor belt on the last part of it. Uh, that has a magnet on it that will pull the the metal. And then it'll come over and and drop off.
Does it sand it on it also?
With with the the crushing it, it it's, you can touch it, there's nothing sharp on it, and it, yeah, it pretty much takes everything off.
That'll be up to you.
Yeah.
Pick up a load of sand and do what you want. Matt, you want to follow with that pressure? Really, I'm excited, I think that's a great idea.
I've been trying, I've been working on for a long time.
I love it.
If you have one question, since it's gonna be our section, I think you need to put something here for fencing. Or somehow, I would like to see a few containers left outside of pencil, anybody could recycle at any time, but I don't want the.
But I don't want to have it a magnet. I could see these coming to dump and dump.
Yeah, because of that, I was looking at utilizing, because it's, it's like, the property is not just for the recycling, it's for all the departments that access that. So that's something I was looking at to share the cost with all the departments on this. Because we utilize this more than just recycling.
Yeah, but I mean, it's fancy, it's not all that.
Yeah.
Anyway, that's, the design needs to be somewhere.
I mean, I can, I can add more. No, 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 that's enough. We find out the best time.
All I know is when those old dumpsters were there, they just got filled up and more garbage. So.
We made up some fence becoming available.
Right, just some.
It's on Arizona Street. Oh, yes.
Oh, yeah.
Okay. So I guess you can't add more there.
Well.
This is fine.
Do you wanna make sure?
Okay, any other questions? Go down.
We're crushed a bit. They crushed that.
You crushed that one, Matt.
We'll pay later. Public work streams. Not a long list, but very thin list.
You want me to do this better? So, okay, so we've talked about this for many years, the old Disney Silver Lateral project. This is a projected cost. We don't know this a hundred percent because it's a large project and we don't have to bring the whole grant done. Right now, we have Western Resources updating the PBR, preliminary engineering report. And that should be done within a month. And we'll be able to take that and go out for, for funding for full engineering and construction at that time. So that's what this fifty million here is for, the full grant, full construction and engineering grant. To replace the laterals. So not, in two thousand and six, we put in the mains in all Disney, the sewer mains. So this, but we did replace the laterals. So the laterals is from the main to where the homes connect to our, to our, we have small, smaller lateral, covered laterals. And then there's private laterals that are from, that are privately, private side of the homes. With this, our, our last conversations with USDA, they said we will be willing, we would be willing to give you more money to go all the way to the, to the homes and the dwellings. And we've talked about this before because they're like, those sewer lines are probably the same, hey, yeah, they're all put in by themselves. So, yeah, they're all the same, so. So we haven't had much, be able to have much communication with USDA lately, but we will be talking with them here a lot once this is done.
It, it's done. Actually, they received a call from USDA today. It's looking as if in the next few weeks, they want to come down, meet with us and make a presentation council. Still don't know what that's all about yet, but as the mayor certainly knows and some of you folks already know. We've been working very hard to try and get USDA's attention at the high level, okay? And there's been several bits and starts. I'm just gonna leave it at that, man. And so we, we're, we're hopeful since they have contacted us asking to meet. And I, I understand that presentation council. That maybe something's coming soon and that will be an opportunity for us to, I mean, they know about this project and they know about other projects that we have. In fact, the solar panel project for City Hall was a USDA grant. And then, and then it wasn't. And so we have several conversations we need to have with the USDA. But it's a very hopeful sign now that they're approaching us.
Well, that came partially from our contact with the governor's office.
Yes.
We asked them the why and what, and then also I had some conversation with our, our legislative people. She also contacted them, so I think they'll see, yeah, we'll see that.
Yeah, but I take that as a positive development.
Absolutely, but now they're reaching out.
Any questions on these two laterals?
No. Just go by, let me see it.
We mind already, so, but you go. So next one is miscellaneous grants.
Well, this is where you would put anything additional for the library right now, and you just have, you know, some money just in case.
Yeah, I'll go more after tomorrow, but I would have a like to have a place holder of a, a little more than fifty thousand.
What would you like?
A hundred.
At least a hundred would be enough.
No, I mean, I'm sorry, I think, I think one point one, one point one. I'm gonna ask for a million.
Okay. Well, we'll make it once more.
And that's just gonna be the, what, twenty-three, one twelve line, I know?
Yeah.
That's the one, yes.
One point one. We did that study. We got the study and there was actually almost a million and a half repairs that needed to be done in there, you know, on that building, so.
It'll be lucid HVAC system that we ordered a year ago.
Well, that.
But that we.
We've already handled that. There's some things we have handled.
I was told we should be seeing some progress on the HVAC in this company.
If you do remember, I asked if we can, if I can pull the trigger on this, I'll need an update on the, on the amounts in that study, remember the last week? Sure. We talked about it in that library study?
Yes, sure.
Okay.
We can do that, because I think some of the smaller items too.
And may I clarify what you were saying, you want, just because I get lost here. You want one point one million to be?
Under the library grants.
Okay, is this because you are expecting something?
Yeah, well, I'm asking for a congressional award.
Okay.
From one of our Congress boarders, one hundred percent.
Okay, true.
Well, there, we got one meeting, one Zoom meeting with them, and so.
I thought it was this one.
So tomorrow meeting.
On, on Saturday, fifty, nothing.
So his chief of staff is going to be in town tomorrow, so I'm gonna be sitting down with him and turning screws.
Breakfast meeting.
That's really good for that. So next one is firework.
Here's another, here's a hundred and seventy thousand left in Arva, and I think all, all that party, they're designated for some, for projects. They just haven't done something, but should roll over into next year.
So this has been designated, but there's no decision making on that. Decision has been made.
Well, how much was that HVAC?
Oh, yes. No, I think it was two eighty-five.
Yeah, very increases. So one item is two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. And that's the HVAC system.
And the, and the two.
Fire stations. The fire stations now.
Yes.
Okay, so that, the two fire stations. Yeah, so.
One's our Garfield.
You want me to get on up there? Yeah, okay. Oh, we had, what are your order for the bathroom for the garden part? And that was going well. We had an engineer do a site plan because we have to get utilities up to where we're going. And show where it had is and where everything's going. We had to see if we needed to do a handicap ramp because we didn't know the elevations. We got it surveyed, didn't, so we got that. I went out to bid for the construction, for the construction of a pad. It's not a concrete pad. It was a dry pad that the building sits on. It's in part, it's fully concrete and everything. That's how this building is engineered and to bring in all utilities in. With that, we were, I can't remember what the price was, but we were about fifty thousand over budget. So for now, it's on hold.
It was nine hundred thousand, I remember some. I mean, I don't, I don't, there's any others on there.
Yeah, I know how to carry up right now. You know, I, I've done this type of construction before in Minnsloch. And it turned out to be a really nice way to put in public bathrooms that were, I hate to use the word bulletproof, but so it'd be a, yeah, a division drive and could be cleaned out of the puddles. Nobody likes to clean up somebody else's mess, so we, we're trying to do bathrooms for the public now in such a way that the mess plus the bacteria and other bathrooms that go with it can be flushed out of the system before they have to actually go ahead and do sanitation. I did two of these same things up in, in Minnsloch for like sixty thousand dollars. Totally installed. Couple of years later, we come down here, we get the same price from the same companies, fifty thousand dollars more. And we hadn't, and, and, and we had, we had pretty much doubled the price what I paid in Minnsloch for the Arthel budget. Because after that much time, you know, it's been a hell of a, so I was really disappointed because that's what I really think is the kind of facilities we should have. But we're back to the drawing board now. We're gonna, we're gonna wait for that, and hopefully use something soon.
So the, the only thing that we had to pay for was the engineering for that building because we had already, we had it engineered. So we have that. So when we wanna go back out, we, we don't have to pay for engineering because we found their business and then they provided us. And we would need more, but we didn't have to pay that whole thing that before we came back out.
We're disappointed, but.
Well, you're gonna build it. These buildings are gonna stay old.
Yeah.
That's our biggest problem.
Yeah, and, and this was built where it could withstand.
Yeah, and it, it's the same thing you see on the site.
Yep, yeah, it was fully concrete, everything broke, the walls, walls, like the stainless steel toilets, so. We got the idea from the National Park Show, which is.
Like I said, we're disappointed, but I'm good.
Not maybe I'm.
No, good news is we still have. And you think we're getting started back, back, back out and you're looking. There's still somebody else.
Yeah, yeah, we have, we have everything ready for us. Everything is ready to go. Well, let's kind of gauge what we, what we think is the right time.
Okay, everything else on that.
That service fund is, we transfer money out of the departments that are financing items and into this fund. And then this is where we change it all out of. So right now, it's for some vehicles, the PSPRs pension bonds, that's the largest amount. And then some head filler equipment. We also have to record our Neurox machines, coffee machines now as a finance. So that goes there also.
I know this is exciting.
Only the count, be excited.
And then the next one, that service wastewater, basically the same thing, that's a transfer out of the wastewater fund. And then paid out of here for the amount that's still owed on the wastewater treatment.
Please the solar system too.
Yeah, it's a solar and the waste water. We just, pretty much, it's interesting how we're expecting along with ten thousand upon balance. We, we just kind of put it every year and if something happens.
I thought we, we said yesterday was thirty thousand, is it thirteen thousand? I thought I heard you were thirty thousand yesterday. Is that the one we're talking about?
Thirty, thirty thousand would be the entire amount they have available to spend, so.
We just budgeted, okay, per year, okay, okay. That makes sense. Maybe we'll tell that.
Division of bus. That you want it.
Yeah, sure. So with the busy bus, we have pretty much one route, but we have two different shifts. But the city of those employees, we drive our buses. So they, they switch around like noon and sort of get new drive, drive the evening. That's just kind of give you an idea of what's going on. So.
They not going up to stone all the way? As far as I know, guys. Probably the other day that I saw, hang on. I'm, I'm sorry, in front of a theater, we're. I haven't seen it last week for a while. I just wanted.
Well, I guess we can check that out.
Yeah, we, I can check it out and make sure.
Well, one development that's really not reflected here in the budget, but it's very much part of the business. We partnered earlier, well, I guess last year, last calendar year. The county jail had made a request for a bus stop. And which we thought was a good idea because when they release prisoners, if they don't have a ride, and many of them, they work their way to the town and, you know, pick up, try and pick up the busy bus.
See lots of them myself.
And people like Matt have, they have, they knock on his door and ask him, like, do your cigarette or maybe for the cigarette? Maybe a little cash or a ride or whatever. And, and we've had several instances where the neighbors and neighbors and us, that, you know, this, at nine thirty, nine, it's a little under. So, and the jail was aware of this and so we worked out a partnership where they are buying a bus shelter and installing it on John Drive, just off of John Drive on Three Point Leonard, which is through the mission they do. So now, and, and the other thing is, is that they're modifying their release schedule. Because before, they just, they release you and they release you. Now they've got the busy bus schedule and they'll make their releases closer to the time the bus comes to you. And they'll be able to get a ride to the lyric or where else, or, or pick up those rides, not those rides, but. And if they need to go to, uh, what's your, they need to go to see a list, so that's gonna really open up the opportunities for them to get where they need to go a lot more quickly. So like I said, I think our guys would help assemble it, but they're, they bought it.
Yes, it's actually, our guys have been over there prepping the area and because the bus shelter has arrived. And I think that either went in yesterday or tomorrow. Uh, and I think that either went in yesterday, or, or tomorrow, or today or tomorrow, I don't know, about exactly. Uh, so, that's something good, uh, we have, because CGO has bought some of our passes and coaches connection. So, so far, they've been able to use, you know, free passes pretty much uh, for uh, our bus system and connection. Um, so once those run out, uh, they'll be buying, the county will be buying those.
So, I have a question, uh, I mean, it's a good, it's a good one, uh, they, they are not charging, they are not increasing, the contractor is keeping the same. Charging us the same amount, two twenty-seven into next year, so they don't increase in that?
No.
Okay.
So, last year was the first year that they will increase.
So, and next year is gonna be the same as last year, two twenty-seven?
Okay, that's good.
And the last one is capital improvements. So, um, as has been the case for several years now, the only capital improvement project in the capital improvements fund is City Hall. Um, almost every dollar here is already in the bank. If we have already paid or contracted for the work that has been done so far, uh, the only thing left to do is to sell Hillcrest. And uh, to, and I've been, in fact, we had a conversation, I think the mayor was in on, uh, one day last week with. EPA who has uh, granted us the money to, to pass this out, the Hillcrest building, which is not religion and part of the plan. But since the money became available, and it was so easy to get, um, it could give us, uh, forget what was available, but we applied for the million dollars and all. All of the grant applications for the area didn't come up to the amount they unveiled itself. Uh, we're almost here to keep them in, so. Now, what, what they don't tell you, of course, is that there's gonna be roadblocks we have to cross. Um, before we can start actually using that money, and they apologize profusely, every time they tell us we got one more thing to do. And we're right now doing one more thing, and I think that one more thing might be finally it. And so, um, we have spent more time waiting to start than it actually takes to do the necessary cleaning. And so, I feel pretty confident, once, once the contractor gets on site, then we'll have a pretty good idea when we expect them to finish. Um, we can start marketing the building again, even though it's not finished, we just have to hold on to building until. Um, until the grant's closed out, so I can still sell it while it's being worked on, but, and I, and I hope I do. Um, and we've been using the same number right along, but quite frankly, I think that number might be adjusted up there. Um, we've had an appraisal and two updates to the appraisal, and I plan to get another update on that appraisal when we're done with the environmental remediation. That's half a million dollars going. You know, in the value.
In the value.
We've been, we've been marketing at six hundred thousand. Now, I'm, I'm not saying I'm gonna be able to get a million or two, but I should be able to get another six hundred thousand.
For sure.
So, I mean, for, for development, the building is like old, Anthony, so, and, and they'll know it's clean because it'll be certified. So.
We do have a historic thing now.
Yeah, right, but, you know, we still haven't gotten an approval on this yet, but um. Uh, Melissa's been uh, twisting EPA's arm for replacement windows too. To cover these part of the building, there's a lot of windows in that building. Um, they haven't said yes, but they haven't said no. Um, but by the time you replace every window in that building, you're probably, probably could have just pulled the old frames out and put it in the unit yet. The question will be, what ship overall approved? And so we're in that process right now. So. And we do, we do still have some, a, a couple of interested developers. Um, and Melissa told me there was a new one that kind of popped up on the radar this past week. So I still, I know it's just like a building, but the big problem has always been the same problem. Um, developers want to buy the building and develop it using low income housing tax credit program. There's only one round of tax credits for that building every year, and that, that occurs on due first. Um, the first person, the first company, first developer that bought the building. Um, had never lost a round of low income housing tax credits till now. And uh, so he just kind of, okay, guys, I'm done, and then, and then we got another offer that council, council accepted it. Um, they elected not to go through with it, and they were actually gonna pay us seven hundred thousand, so that's what I'm saying, I think we can do a little better. So, so that's where we are right now, and uh, really well, but has no, nothing to do with City, City Hall, except to tell them to finance it. And uh, we're, uh, I think, uh, Matt, um, is, would agree that, um, we, we were behind about a month ago. With construction project, it appears that they've pretty much caught up.
Yes, they've been working very, really, with, 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 got it, right, catch up.
So, Pete, I'm hoping that you'll be able to call me up and say they're putting beams up. You're very quickly, and uh. Yeah, it's gonna be, um, a, a lot more exciting when we can actually see it rise up from the, from the surface. Uh, I've been trying to get over there every week or so to take progress for us. And uh, and I know the contractor's doing it too, uh, Matt is taking his drone over there occasionally, and is uh, going up and taking shots from overhead. And when, when Matt gets some video, uh, he brings it over to Ashley, and we'll put it up on this, on the city uh, Facebook page. So everybody can see what we're doing, it's kind of cool, so. So that's kind of where we are on it, uh, don't expect this to change much, the only change could possibly be if we sell more than six hundred thousand, that would be. All of that is money to the. So. That's all we have, folks.
Anything else, anyone? I wouldn't.
It's only seven thirty.
I know. Do you want? There's nothing else, I'm in the motion now.
I make a motion.
Go here. Oh, oh, what?
Retract your motions.
Okay.
Sorry, Frank. Um, there, there is a piece of unfinished business, um, we had started a conversation last night about, um. What the uh, increase in wages you do. Um, I don't, I don't wanna do that tonight, a- as you can tell, I'm really an open dishwasher. But we need to do it soon. Um, I don't know if tomorrow night or Thursday now would work for you all, I promise it wouldn't be a two hour discussion, but it's probably a good hour. So, we've got meetings scheduled if you wanna use it. But I think we, you know, the purposes of getting this budget, but the battery will collapse in figures.
I think we shouldn't have that distinction.
So, it's been a pleasure, Wednesday or Thursday.
Monday, we got it.
Wednesday, okay.
Same, I'll make it five.
If, if it works, no, if we start a little later with that, easier for you.
Yeah, because I'll be able to make it tomorrow, so, if you do it at seven, I'll, I'll be willing to do it. And uh, I'll stick with your number for now. Okay, the number you proposed, this is mine.
It's already noticed for five thirty right now.
Yeah, it was noticed for five thirty.
Correct.
And it's less than twenty-four hours.
Correct.
So we can't.
I, I'm, I will go with your recommendation on this, so this is my, my, okay, my, my favorite on this, so. But they just.
Okay, sounds good. All right, and you know, I don't wanna come. Tomorrow.
If you would like, or, I mean, we're streaming it as well.
Stay on stream, I'll, I'll be on, I'll, if I have anything, I will, yeah.
Do you want me to send you a separate Zoom link then? Okay, I can do that.
You guys can do it, yeah, all right.
Okay, in that case, I say.
Go ahead, Frank.
No, no, we gotta make a motion to adjourn until five thirty tomorrow.
Recession.
Recession, I'm sorry.
I make a motion to reset tomorrow's at five thirty.
Second.
I second.
All the better, you know, I second.
I think everybody. Thank you all.